All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the regular meeting session of the Milford School Committee. Today is Thursday, April 25th, 2024, and this meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV. Copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central office. First agenda item is the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. One note, the cover page in the packet lists marks for all three. The second two are actually April and they are correct on the minutes. So, the first set of minutes for approval is from the reg-- sorry, the special meeting that was held on March 14th, 2024. We had this one on the agenda last time. There were a couple corrections. Are there any more potential corrections? I see none. Is there a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from March 14th, 2024? Motion by Megan? Second by Brendan? All in favor?
I abstain.
We have six in favor and Michael will abstain.
I abstained as well.
Sorry. Five in favor. Abstain from Robin and Michael.
Mr. Chair, give me that date again.
That is March 14th.
March 14th. Special meeting, correct?
Special meeting, that's right. Okay, the next set of minutes is from the regular session of April 11th, 2024. Any discussion that may prevent approval here. Megan?
Just an edit, Matt, on the future agenda items. My request for Dr. Kinsigley was actually on the iReady data versus MCAS, just FYI, and he already prepared it, so just to-- we usually do the MCAS separately, so it's called iReady. So, just to correct that, Matt, because we're actually going to go through that tonight.
Yep. Can we wait for the corrected minutes?
Yep. I'm sort of has it right here.
Fantastic. Anything else? All right, so can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the regular meeting from March 11th, 2024 with the correction of changing MCAS to iReady?
April 11th.
Yes, I looked at the wrong screen. Let's not look at that one. Sorry, I'll say that again. A motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 11th, 2024 with the edit of changing MCAS to iReady. Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor? That's unanimous. And then we have executive session minutes from April 11th, 2024. These are approval only. Any comments on this one? I see none, so can I get a motion to approve the executive session minutes for approval only for April 11th, 2024?
A motion?
Motion by Chris. Second by Robin. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Onto announcements, correspondence, and distribution. Anybody have anything? I have one thing that I'll just note. About a week or so ago, the EL program director did reach out to the school committee asking for one member to attend the dual-language retreat, which is Thursday and Friday, June 20th and 21st of 2024. If there is an individual that's interested in attending that, please reach out directly to her. If there's multiple, you can let me know and we'll figure that one out. See that there is nothing else there? Do we have anyone here for invitation to speak, so we can move on to the chairperson general update? So, I have two quick things here. On the screen, Dr. Kinsigley's been kind enough to share a tracker-style table that has been put together. Everyone here has access to view this. The purpose of this is just informational document for the committee to know what it is that we've added to the future agenda items list and which category they land on. A little bit of a status and potential due dates, just to keep us all honest and not lost in where these notes are going to. And then there's also a second tab, which we don't have to open up, called deliverables. And that is for anything that is requested during the meeting. I put everything in there from looking for supportive documentation for something or iReady data. It'll be put in that, in that tab too, just so we know that what was requested has been heard and recorded and we'll work on getting it, work on getting it addressed. So, you guys do have access to that list too. It's just a visibility thing, so. And then the other piece that I wanted to discuss doing going forward as well was in the correspondence section of our meetings, and this is obviously open for discussion, but when we get emails individually from the public, Michael and I were discussing the idea of making sure that those emails get included in the packet for everyone to see in case other members did not get that. It's an idea, but obviously I'd like to hear what everybody thinks about in terms of the transparency of sharing those emails. John?
I mean, to me, it's simple. If you guys get an email that you want us all to be aware of, why don't you just forward it immediately? It doesn't need to be necessarily in this packet.
Yeah, we can do that for committee members. What about in terms of transparency for the public? Is that a, something that you think is an acceptable move to insert, or is that more of?
Well, I haven't thought that much through, but when we hear from people, I think, you know, they might reach out to one of us, but we should all be aware of whatever their concerns are.
Absolutely.
My first concern would be, not concern, but thought would be just share with the whole committee. You know, you got it? If it's, if it's something innocuous, great, answer, answer it or reply to it as an individual member. But if it's something that you think the committee needs to weigh in on, then just, just share it.
Sure. So, the intent was not for internal, it was more for external? So, if somebody decided to review, you know, what we went through, they can see the correspondence of, if somebody wrote into the board saying, hey, I feel this way, right? I think this, this like board does something like this at times.
Megan?
My only concern with that, would it be having the opposite of the intended effect, where someone would hesitate to reach out in the event that they didn't want their message broadly shared? So, I wouldn't want it to have unintended consequences, so just figuring out a way to navigate that.
Robin?
Going off of Meg saying, I think as a board, we should have a discussion about if a member of the community reaches out to us as elected individuals, should there be any degree of, an expectation that you can do that anonymously? Is that an expectation the community should have? I think that's the first discussion, and then based on that, maybe make this decision.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, given public data access regulations, I'm losing the official term, but none of our email inboxes are, are protected, but there's a process to get to the information.
It's all, it's all covered with records.
Right, right. But I understand your concern, and that, and Megan, I agree with that too. We don't want to do anything that may prevent people from reaching out, but obviously, you know, our communications are all open to public.
Yeah, and just last concern, if there's any student information shared in the email, that would obviously rule on us.
And that was one of my reservations too. How do we, how do we make sure that any information that may be said or shared in there is appropriate? So, that's something we can just keep thinking about and potentially discuss, but that was an idea that I thought was worth sharing, so. The other update I have is at the, sorry, I'll, I'll back up. Wednesday morning, I spoke with Zach Taylor at Town Hall, the finance director, and I also spoke with the chair of the finance committee about the discussion we had the previous meeting on increasing the feasibility study value to 2.75 million. Last night, the finance committee did support that favorably, so that's, that's good to go, and they all seemed to completely understand it. Actually, it sounded like multiple of the departments had similar increases in their placeholders as well for the same reasons that we did, so that was also--
Well, good.
--a good turnout. That's all I have. So, that brings us to the district attendance and tardiness review. So, we have Mr. Victor Canino and Mr. Dale Olson, attendance supervisors. You guys come on up. Thank you for coming.
Hello.
Thanks for having us. How are you?
Is this something Dr. McIntyre, you want to--
Yeah, I can introduce you guys. So, we brought in the attendance supervisors as the pandemic was kind of closing out, for lack of a better term, and you've heard me speak many times, just a national crisis we're having around attendance. Chronic absenteeism is something that every community in the United States of America is, is wrestling with. And these two gentlemen have done a phenomenal job of, and I don't want to steal a lot of the thunder, so I'm not going to say it at the time, but they've been very effective at building relationships with students, families, external entities like the courts, social service agencies, the youth center, our administrative teams, they're working with everybody across the district to kind of, you know, bring these numbers down, get kids back in school, and that's, that's everybody's goal here. And our students are running into school every morning, excited to be there, and, you know, and they're doing a lot of work in that regard as well. I'll turn to let him look down. Victor, are you starting?
Start it up, brother.
We appreciate you guys having us here. I came on in January of 2023, and, you know, it's new to me, but Victor and I have built a lot of great relationships over the past 15 months, and our numbers are definitely getting better. When we pulled the data, a couple of years ago, they were sitting at 32%. Today, we're sitting at 21.4. So, I think the work we've, we're doing in the community with the administrators, the teachers, the guidance counselors, I think, seems to be working. We've done a lot of work reaching out to other communities within the state to just pick their brains on how they handle their attendance, and, you know, I think our plan's working pretty well so far.
Yeah, so, to that end, we, aside, we kind of had, as everybody knows, we had a little tragedy at the beginning of this whole thing, so my wingman at that point was teaching me. So, Dale and I have kind of been learning the process, if you recall, I said, we're building the plane as it flies. And the only thing I can add is, we've made some real good inroads, like Doc McIntyre said, with the court, we're, we're trying to get to know the juvenile judge a little bit better to see what their expectations are. Same thing with the youth center, made some real good inroads there. Matter of fact, we have a, one of the high school kids who's having, was having attendance problems. We ended up getting him a job there for this coming summer. Who else? The administrators. We, we meet with them on a regular basis. We were able to develop a protocol to kind of get everybody in the same boat, to try to give it a shape on how we are gonna go about getting the numbers down, right? We also came up with a CRA template based on talking with other p, other--
What, what's CRA?
Child Requiring Assistance.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry.
You needed that by two seconds.
So, we developed a template for that. We're gonna, hopefully this summer, get a webpage going so the community can, you know, just look it up on their computers if they have access. What else were we gonna do with that? Was there something else?
Yeah, so we've picked, picked the brains of, you know, our colleagues across the state, and a lot of them do have websites where parents can go on and this whole attendance section, and it breaks down how attendance works, how the school handles it, and stuff like that. But, but for us, I think the protocol that's in place now here in our district seems to be working pretty well with, you know, the guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, through the administrators, and, you know, Victor and I, you know, we've teamed up, and I think it's, it's trending that it's working well for--
Well, right, so we've been, it took, we're starting to get a lot more phone calls from the community. So, the letters is, they finally put name, first and last names on the, on the nasty grams, as I call them, and we've been getting phone calls because people don't understand, right? Well, why all of a sudden? So, we're just starting to, so in that sense, it's good, right? Because the more information, the better educated the community is, and we can start explaining the importance of being in school. But yeah, it's going good, I guess, you know?
Yeah, we've been out in the community, so we're meeting with church leaders, we're, like the youth center, so like where parents are, where the kids are, and like you said, there's a six-day letter that goes home, so when a kid's absent six days, the district will send a letter home, and another six days, another letter goes home. We, we meet on a monthly basis with each school, and we have an attendance meeting, and what they do is, they'll give us a list of kids that they have concerns with, and like, so for in the courts eyes, the court just wants to see that, you know, what steps have been taken, do you have an attendance protocol? And we're starting to meet those needs, right? So, the steps are being done now in the district, and when we get to court, it's, you know, the court system now can help us because they know we're doing what we're supposed to be doing here, so.
And we've been meeting with families, if, we're basically the eyes and ears for, for Lisa Kincaid's group. You know, we're part of that group. We're the ones, hey, we need to go see what's going on here. We go knock on, knocking on doors, get to meet the families, you know, so we have to break through that trust issue. Yeah, so, I mean, it's, we're chipping away.
Question. Thank you for all the hard work, by the way. So, we have this sheet.
Yep.
Yeah, so can you walk us through this? So, we want to sit behind what you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, this was current as of today. I printed this sheet off, so it, it shows you every grade in our district where they're sitting at, attendance-wise. I mean, Open Architect is, is great, it's a great tool. We, we can see everything through Open Architect, which collects our data. So, this, this is huge for us, so every day, we're pumping the data in, in, you know, this, it gives our numbers. So, by this, we can figure out, hey, we probably need to attack sixth grade a little bit more in the attendance, or maybe it's ninth grade. The way a CRA works though, six to 16, right? So, any child below six, we, we, we can't touch any, once they're 16, we can't touch, right? So, we, we're working with the kids the ages of six to 16, and what we're just trying to do is, we basically, since I came on here, I think we've been concentrating more at the lower levels, right, to create better habits there. It's tough when you have a 15-year-old kid that's chronically absent and it's, nothing's happened, right? So, it's, to reach that young man might be a little difficult, but the numbers are dropping.
The 92%, which I think seems good, right? So, the 21% of the chronic absentee, is that of the, what, 7, 7.3% that are absent, is 21% of those, is that what this number is?
So, yeah, basically, right, let me, let me fill that one.
Sorry, I don't have a question at all, so. Frame it down for me.
So, are students considered chronically absent when they miss 10% or more days?
Right.
And so, 21% of our students, was it 21.4?
21.
This morning.
21.4% of our students as of today are chronically absent, and the 92% is kind of like the aggregate number. So, like, you could be absent just one day and be part of that, you know, 92% for any given day, and that's just aggregate for the year. Does that kind of make sense?
So, 92% is the total absences?
92% is the total attendance.
Attendance.
Well, that's what I meant, yeah.
And--
Percentage of 22%.
So, 21% is 21% of whoever is absent?
Is chronically absent.
And chronically absent.
Yes.
Of that body of numbers.
So, of that 8% or 7.6%, 21% of those kids--
I got you, yeah, thanks.
Did that break the question down for you?
It did.
So, out of that, that 27.1% that you see there, today's number, 20--
Well, no, you're looking at that's last year's.
Oh, I'm sorry. The state, from, as I understand it, pre-K gets lumped into that as do anybody above 16, and those are the two cohorts, the two groups that are driving the, the number to 27, to 22, whatever it was today.
When you, oh, sorry. So, when you say that you, you can't go after them, I get with the, the CRA rate, right?
Yes.
However, but can you still reach out and be like, hey--
Yeah, yeah, we do, we do.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, that goes without saying. Yeah, 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 that's kind of like bread and butter stuff, right? And, yes.
So, you can still target those groups?
We do, we do.
We do.
But if they're wise to it, they know that--
But it's like--
You can't do it.
We can't, we can't take them.
Changing hearts and minds, right? Trying to win hearts and minds, and it's, that's, the doc said to me the other day, I was like, man, you know, I was, you know, taking it all in when we knew we were coming here, and the doc says, yeah, now you understand how, how, you know, the whole community has to be involved. So, you know, that's, that's what's so good about getting to know the youth center, because there, you know, we get access to just about all the kids, a lot of kids in the community, and that's where, that's where it's at, right? So, hopefully, this summer, we can start getting better hold of the parents, you know, and saying, hey, you know, these are the habits that you need to start inculcating in your kids so they can, so they can improve.
When we broke down the numbers of kids like six to 16, the, the number drops to 18.8%. The kids that we can actually get access to and be able to hold them a little more accountable, right? But--
And for the under stakes, just, there's no, there's no compulsory attendance until a student turns six years old. So, you know, there's, that one, we really have no control over. The 16-year-olds, I think we're still, 16 and above, we're still targeting relationship-wise, but the, the under six is really, you know, there's, there's no requirement for them to attend school.
Brendan? Yeah. First, thank you for your hard work. I know this is not easy. I'm sure it takes a lot of your day to make those inroads, so thank you. With the pre-K number, like, could you speak to that a little bit? Is that like just kids who are sick?
We--
You don't really know?
Yeah, because we can't really--
We don't, we don't even touch that.
I can answer that for you a little bit, just, just from anecdotal, I don't data connect it to--
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Our preschoolers tend to be more sick than other kids.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Because that number's gotta just, that number's just gotta pull this whole thing down, right?
Yeah, and, and again, for some sessions that are shorter, if something's going on--
Yeah.
--sometimes they don't bring the student in.
That's fair.
So, that's why those numbers are a little higher than they would be. And I think your high school numbers, which, which, the high school numbers everywhere are higher than--
Sure.
--anywhere else in, in like a district. You know, District X versus Milford, you're gonna see a very similar trend.
Yeah.
And a lot of it comes from, like, when we were, pre-pandemic, we were probably mid-teens for chronic absenteeism, 14, 15, 16% somewhere.
16%.
16.
16%. And what's happened is, is the high school kids have been, like the pandemic kids, have gone through in the high school, and, and it's just nationally, those numbers are just higher.
Sure.
And we haven't, you know, abandoned those students, but, you know, the, the trend there is nationally, and I think it has a lot to do with kids just not coming back from, and, you know, older kids, you know, the streak of bad habits, like you said, with the--
Sure. Before I get to you.
Okay.
Thank you for this report. I sent an email to everybody quickly. This is a printout of the state report of all the districts, and I was just kind of looking through it at the different districts that we generally compare ourselves to, some are Boeckle, Marlboro. When it comes to these stats, the attendance rate is good. We have a better chronic absentee rate than a lot of those that we tend to compare ourselves to, but my question to you guys is, have you spent any time kind of collaborating with them and what they do to try to see--
Yeah, yeah.
--as like district-type?
Yep, absolutely. So, we started with--
Plymouth.
Yeah, Plymouth, so we belong to a group called Attendance Matters, right? So, email chain, we're trying to find time to be able to get out, but we, we, we've been out, like, we've talked to Framingham--
Salem.
Salem, Fall River, we definitely, Leominster, so, and they've sent us their stuff, and it's similar to how, what our protocol is too. When I talked to the guy at Framingham, who's been doing it there for 30 years, he says, you guys are, you guys are on the right track with what you're doing.
Excellent.
So, I could add one more, you have another follow-up question?
No, no.
One more thing. These guys are underselling what they're doing right now. The relationships they're building are just unbelievable. When they say they're making connection with the youth center, I think you ran a kickboxing class there--
Yeah.
--to connect with kids.
You brought speakers in to the youth center. They're getting kids jobs. They're the caring adult in the, in the school for a lot of these kids who aren't showing up. They're going to the home, they're connecting them to Lisa Kincaid and her team to give resources to the family, to break down whatever barriers are in place that maybe is preventing a student to come from school. You know, they've made some referrals to the night program that we have, because we know the students working to help support the family.
The compassion, empathy, and caring these guys have shown is like, I'd say second to none, what they're doing, and, and I think the relationships they're building, and they're not always getting friendly responses, which I want to emphasize that too. You know, sometimes it takes two or three meetings before they kind of make a little bit of a breakthrough with a kid or a family. It's tough work, but they're, they're very creative in how they're trying to get kids back to school. And, and like Victor said, it's a team effort. If it's just these guys, we're never going to be successful, but it's our administrators, it's our counselors, it's our social workers, we're reaching out to people in the community to make, you know, to make it seem like it's really important to be in school, and, you know, we're making progress. And I think it just, it speaks to what these guys are doing.
Anything else before we wrap this up?
I see what happens when you put a dashboard in front of me, it keeps, keep asking questions. Can we see a trend, like this year's trend compared to like the last two years, or at least last year?
The only trend that I've seen is, we're getting a lot more phone calls, like--
But, but don't we have data?
The data-wise?
Yeah, so I think I might have given it to the chair.
Is that? All right, what's in here?
You have it right here in front of you. So, I have our data for the past few years right here in front of us, so we can definitely get this out to the committee.
Did this come from, is that off of this report?
No, no, that's a full state report, so we do have it here, but we can give you guys where we've been at for dating back years, right, attendance-wise?
Thank you.
I had a few questions, so, so, thank you for the work you're doing. I had one quick question with the data, and then I just had some more general questions. The bottom row, SP, do you happen to know what that stands for?
I don't know, like--
It's not a huge--
We've been trying to get that answer. I was thinking it might have been out of district.
I didn't know if it was like special populations, is what I was wondering.
Where do you see that?
Underneath, underneath the grade.
How many kids are in it? Does it say?
It's, and, so, it's, yes, their average attendance rate is only 88.3%.
How many kids?
Doesn't say. We don't, we don't have a number.
There's not an N.
Greg, he's gonna give you the sheet.
That, that could be our post, uh--
Post second.
--post-gravel.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
That's my guess of what that is.
Okay, and if we're not sure, it's okay, I was just curious.
Greg, is that what you think?
Yes.
Okay.
We just knew that it was high, right?
Okay. Yeah, no, no problem. So, I just, I had a couple of questions, but to address what we were saying before, so I completely understand why you're targeting the six to 16, and the below six, like we were saying, I don't necessarily know that, I would argue it's within your purview, but I do think it's just important for us to think about and note, because if we're looking at, you know, chronic absenteeism being high amongst our preschoolers and kindergartners, these are just more reasons to make sure we have books in homes, because if kids aren't coming to school, we want to make sure we're still thinking about literacy. For the over 16 group, though, I know that your focus is attendance. Do you, so for me, I'll just tell you, I guess my opinion and bias, I feel like attendance and reducing, dropping out are just two sides of a different coin. And so, when I'm thinking about the 16-plus group, I'm really thinking about how do we reduce our dropout rates? Do you feel that is part of what your position could become, trying to help with that, or Do you feel that is part of what your position could become, trying to help with that, or do you really feel like it's beyond the scope?
I, I mean, I can probably, I'll talk to that. It's um, I think between the age of sixteen, sixteen, we're looking at um, if we take how many kids are chronically over the, at the ten percent, we're looking like this year, probably around nine hundred kids.
Okay.
So we're trying to target those nine hundred kids and break that down.
Okay.
Um, it's not to say that we don't speak to, we have spoken to fifth grade parents, I mean, fifth grade, five year old parents. Um, just saying, hey, this is who we are. Um, you know, this, this is, we give them a pamphlet on attendance and, you know, um, data that goes with it about schooling and dropout rates and different things. Um, and we do, we still work over here with Mr. DeVito and the administration here with the older kids and try to reach them. Um, but like I said, we're, most of our concentration is between the age of six and sixteen.
And again, I'm still learning. When I first got here, uh, those students above sixteen, the night school, I can't remember the teacher's name up there now.
Christina Alberi.
Christina, I got to meet her, spoke with her, and I was, cuz I said, hey, there's a sixteen year old here that's gonna quit school, basically. As soon as, uh, he, I, I can't remember if it was a he or she. And I said, can I refer him to you? And she was telling me, well, she, they can't come here to my program until they're seventeen. So there's a, you know, and I'm, again, I'm not wise to the ways of the state policies and all of that. But, you know, it doesn't, there's a year in between, you know what I mean? So.
No, I think you're bringing up an important point of how do we reach all the students, right?
That, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if, if anybody do that, I'd be flying around the country.
And then my, my last question, and it's more just if we were to get more information from you, so I think that this data is great. I don't know if this is something you already have, but something that I would be interested in seeing is what these trends have, or what the current levels are for what I would consider more of our special population. So ELL students, students with disabilities, um.
We can break that down through Open Architect, you guys, and send it to the committee. It's, it's, it's all on there.
That'd be really great, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Can I answer, can I answer your question before you move on to the next one? Um, the work you're doing is dropout prevention, because if you attend school, you're less likely to drop out. So everything you're doing, every day that you bring people back to school, you're less likely to drop out. So you're absolutely right. It's two, two sides of the same coin.
Good. John?
Yeah, I just want, I wanted to say a, a couple of things. Come on, we gotta realize that the, these two guys are doing great work right now, but they've only been in these positions for a couple of years, right? Uh, one and two, or two and three years. And, and these statistics may go back further. Uh, in, in, Dr. McIntyre made a bunch of points that I was going to try and reinforce and make is that it's, it's the connections that you're making with these individuals and with these families. The statistics are only part of it. It's, it's the real world connections, and I hear great things about the work that you guys have done. And I want that to be, to be noticed. Um, and that, that's my, that's my biggest point right now. We can, we can spread statistics all, all over the map. But it, it's the real, it's, 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 you guys probably have a bunch of personal situations that you could re, you know, recount to us that I'm not gonna ask you to, but yeah. I just want you to know that I recognize the, the value of your positions and, and the work you're doing personally and individually. And I think that's, that's the biggest take back, takeaway that I have from tonight's meeting and, and your roles overall.
Megan, Megan.
Yeah, thank you both for being here. Thanks also for bringing the data, cuz it is helpful for us, cuz we don't necessarily look at it, you know, sliced and diced this way, so thank you for that. I'm, I'm sure every situation is different, but as I think about our role, are there any themes that come up that we could think about funding solutions to some of the challenges?
Uh, I mean, so everything that I've read to date, again, I said it earlier, it's, it's a community effort, effort, right? I hate to use the expression, but it applies, you know, it takes a village.
Hundred percent.
Right? So any, any, and it's not so much, uh, I don't, funding, I mean, I, again, I don't know anything about finance or budgets or anything. But at your level, you know, having meetings with the, with the youth center committee, with the town council, those kind of, if, you know, those kind of relationships at that level would, would probably go a long way because, again, right? So a lot of the, a lot of the absentees, students, come from other countries. So that, that's kinda one of the driving numbers, right? They come, you know, and everybody sees the news, everybody knows what's going on nationally and all of that. They gotta feel part of the community, right? And the, the, the more they feel part, the more they get integrated, the more, you know, they feel part of the, the better, the better, you know? That, that's, that's, that's the only, I, I was saying that this morning to, to Dale.
Like, most of the families we are working with, like, and what we, what we do too, is like, most, the, most of the families we are working with, they, they, they need food, they need clothing, they need help, right? So we, we have resources here in the community, and so Victor and I are, are sending them ways to, to get that help, um, you know.
And just, I mean, I hate, I gotta, I'm working with a student right now. I'm giving him my bicycle so he doesn't have to.
Well, and that's what I was getting at, right?
Asking his grandmother.
Right. We're piloting a new bus program to pick up kids that are really within walking distance to help. So I'm talking about things like that, that we can drive dollars to solutions like that.
That's huge.
Bussing would be huge.
Okay.
Cuz it's, like, we've, we've run into it a lot where it's like, it's cold out. We're not, we're not walking there. It's, it's raining out. Um.
There, there's a correlation to it, rainy days and snowy days and.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's one of the best things about Open Architects is it shows you by day.
Yes.
The attendance rates. So the biggest days are, um, half a days. Half a days, by far, the biggest days that kids miss, followed by inclement weather or days, um, like preceding a long weekend or something. Those days, those are, like, you can look at it, it's every year.
Friday before holidays.
But those wouldn't necessarily be chronically absent, correct, right? Those are gonna be, those are absent.
It all goes into the same bucket though, right?
Yeah, I know you're getting that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know you're getting that.
But it goes in with the casual attendance piece that we're showing up with too.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
Agreed. Okay. That, I was just curious, if, as themes come up, please come to us and help us figure out ways to try to come up with creative solution, yeah, for sure.
So they said nine hundred kids, two guys.
For sure.
You know, and that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of families endorse the knock on and calls to make and, you know. That's, you know, and that's why we're asking for an additional physician last, you know, because obviously, you know, why we have many physicians for.
But the point, point, another point, two or three years ago, we had zero guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, like, yeah, it's, to give you an example, like, you know, we kinda divide and conquer sometimes, right? So like this morning, I took one of the Portuguese adjustment counselors, um, and we were at a middle school, a young lady, um, who's fourteen, who has a baby, who's one of our court. So I got a baby in my lot this morning, where I'm pleading with her. She's one of our court cases and, right? And um, the adjustment counselor's got another, right, two year old, and we're playing and we're trying to plead with her, right? Cuz she's one of our court cases, and um, that's, that, that's like a day in our life, right? So it's um, we're, I think we are, we're, we're building connections. Not, listen, not everybody likes us, obviously, when we're knocking on their door, right? Um, but knocking on their door does help because now they look at their children and say, hey, we'd rather not have those two guys knocking on our door.
Spending some time with these guys, you understand that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I'm a football coach, right? So I take a coach's perspective to this and like, you know, we're driving the football down the field, right? And like, what's the next play? What's the next play? So.
So to that end, and I don't want you, sorry, Matt, to answer necessarily now, Dale, but I would love, as you're following up with us with some of the data that we asked for, if you could just give us a couple bullets later, kinda what your strategy is for summer, cuz it's kind of a unique opportunity. You don't necessarily have students, just to.
Go knocking on doors. So what we'll do at the end of this year, we'll, we'll run the list. Anybody who's above eighteen absences for the year?
So like our summer last year, we, we coordinated with the administrators, um, vice principals, principals, um, Mrs. Hughes and I probably did eight home visits last summer with her. And then I did other visits with, you know, other vice principals and stuff like that. So now they're getting their face too out there and stuff like that. So that's our summer. We're, it's basically, we're banging on doors all summer.
Got it.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I just, I just wanna clarify one question. The nine hundred number, is that nine hundred kids who missed ten days or more?
I think that was, that's an estimate, right, of what?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I just, I just want.
Kids that are chronically absent, ten, ten percent, right?
So we've got about forty six hundred kids, twenty percent is about nine hundred, give or take.
One thing we, and, I mean, this, Dale had mentioned earlier, we're trying to get parents to, to change their habits. Unfortunately, sometimes that means bringing them to court, you know what I mean? Uh, we, we, we haven't gone down that path, uh, like aggressively. Uh, we've only filed one of those petitions with the court. Uh, but, you know, as I say, all is fear and love and war. And if, we're trying to change habits and people, you know, that, that's a hard thing to do sometimes. But yeah, so we're trying to, hopefully next year, and I hate to say it, I don't know how anyone else to say it.
Start to bring parents to court.
Start bringing parents in, those elementary school parents. And actually, you know, it, and it, it, it works because there was a situation that I was involved in and we, the parent couldn't get to, to the meetings with the elementary school principal and, you know, it was, it looked like she was blowing everybody off. But it wasn't the case. We went, checked it out, and the meeting was, we ended up having the meeting at the woman's house. And everything worked out, thank God. But yeah, so hopefully, you know, through that push and pull, back and forth, things tend to work themselves out, right? And hopefully, we won't have to do too much of that next year, but I think that, that if they know what's at stake.
Yeah, so it's different from a CRA to a failure to cause. A failure to cause becomes a criminal matter.
Right.
So now it's.
It's a misdemeanor offense.
Yeah, so they're, they're getting fined and stuff like that when we bring the parents to court.
Chris, we got about a minute left on this topic.
All right, be quick. I guess to drive home Megan's point of, yeah, the next time, just like the top three, the top five, the top ten, kinda reasons why you're seeing that chronic absenteeism, and you know, and if it is a, like you said, a transportation thing, and what we can do from a budgetary side, or is it, you know, trying to, how do we facilitate meetings with these families more? And how can, you know, again, from the budget side, how do we facilitate that better from, from our side? So yeah, come to this board with suggestions, um, you know, so that way we can work with you.
Yeah.
In trying to kinda develop, you know, the funding, the proper funding to, to assist you. Because obviously, yeah, we're seeing thirty two percent has gone down to twenty one percent. So how do we push that more? And I look at it too, that, you know, seventh and eighth grade, those numbers are looking good. It's below that twenty one percent. But then it kicks way up to way above it in ninth and tenth, and that's still within that sixteen year old. So how are we targeting that? And you don't have to answer it now. I'm just making that point where you see that variation there. And I know that's, your day to day is all about, you know, making those connections. So how do we make, how do we further those connections, right?
I, I think bussing is, 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 will be a huge thing. If we can add more bussing, like, I know, I think you guys did this one, is there a pickup in downtown Milford?
For the high school.
For, for the high school. I think if you did that one for the middle school, I think that will help our numbers too, right?
That's great. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thanks for coming.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all your work and everything you got to do for all of these students. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both. It's a lot of work and it's very impressive.
Right. Subcommittee assignments are next. Um, I'm still working on being able to present. I don't have anything for you to put up there. So I'll email the list to everybody else, but for the general public, I'll also read off what we have here. So quickly, um, policy is Robin, Brendan and Michael. Budget is John, Megan and Michael. Long range planning, John, Chris and myself. Marketing and communication is Brendan and myself. Milford TV is Jonathan Capici. And IT technology is Michael, uh, myself again. And labor and management, we have Megan, Chris and myself. And Sycamore Bank is Robin. Um, any questions or changes, obviously, you can send that to me. The budget one, I believe we're gonna, we're gonna try to resurrect the budget subcommittee a little, going forward, especially as we're having a chat, a transition with the, the school business administrator as well. So we'll, we'll get that one going a little more. And then if anybody on the budget one, especially has a conflict, just let me know and I can backfill on that one. I assume no questions here. Tell them that's another one. That brings us to item seven, the report of the superintendent of schools. Dr. McIntyre, it's all yours.
All right, uh, really quickly, um, not a lot new to report, could be just, uh, we just had an email right before vacation. Um, there's not, not a great deal to update in terms of progress. I've been in regular communication with our MSBA, we is on, around the feasibility study and other related issues. She stated that we can expect an email from the MSBA with additional information on the eligibility period and schedule a virtual kickoff call on July twenty second. They will all be invited to, as well as folks from the town. Uh, as we get closer to the Milford start date, which is August fifth, they will go over each deliverable in great detail and provide the opportunity for questions if there are any. Um, we've also got, uh, I've got the official form for the initial compliance certification. And I was gonna have folks sign it like this month, but they can't accept it until August fifth. So I think we're gonna probably wait on that, just because it'll just be sitting in our office. Otherwise, it's just a signature from me, Matt, and then either the town manager or the select board chair, whoever decides. Um. We also held our first forum where we presented an overview of the MSBA process, the eligibility period in our project. Um, there was an opportunity for questions from the audience. There were a number, there were a number of great questions. Um, I don't know if Michael, Matt or Megan, you guys wanna share anything from the presentation?
Yeah, I will. Um, we were there. Uh, it went well. Thank you, Dr. McIntyre and, um, everybody who put the presentation together. Um, yeah, so there's some really good thoughtful questions. Um, and I, the, the theme that I heard from the community was, you know, how are we gonna get community feedback into the process? Which we were not ready to talk about just yet, right? Cuz there's a whole feedback mechanism, especially when you bring in your, your architecture, your architect and general contractor. But that was a big feedback I got out of it, was, um, they wanna know how do we get feedback into the process? And so I, that was my takeaway, but otherwise, I thought it was great.
I would say it's probably biased for who shows up for a forum like that, but I would say overall, ton of support for, you know, how do we ensure that this happens? But I think that's who you're gonna get when you, and it was, um, I would say individuals also that didn't have students necessarily in school, which I thought was great also.
Yeah, it was good. It was just another one of those examples of, you can send surveys, you can send emails. Opportunity to have a back and forth conversation. I think that we got a lot more out of it. And it was a great, um, I guess, initial point in the direction of the tone of how people feel about this project. And everybody obviously supported it. Um, and then they're taking it very seriously and, and there's a very clear understanding that this is gonna be expensive, but necessary. So that was, it was very nice to hear. Last thing. Um, so based on that feedback, we were actually doing some minor tweaks to the warrant motion that's gonna be presented at town meeting. So next school community meeting, we'll have a draft for the committee to look at, so.
Matt, if you don't mind, I would just also wanna thank Dr. Ottland for showing up, as well as Representative Murray and two members of the FinCom, Mr. Carrera and Mr. Morton were here, just to give them kudos for taking time out of their busy schedules to participate.
That, that was informed to us, that is now Dr. Ottland.
Yes, yeah, he's just got his doctorate, so congratulations.
Congratulations to Josh.
Do we think that we should have another small presentation about the two warrant articles before we go to town meeting?
So.
I see a lot of head nodding.
We, so we've, we've been, um, we've been talking about this a little, a little bit, Michael and I. And one of the options that has come up is similar to how, um, FinCom does their little update or state of the finance prior to the articles start rolling through a town meeting that perhaps the district does some form of a very short. Here's where we are, here's some of the good stuff we've done, and then some, some supportive information about what specifically these, maybe these two groups do. I don't know, um, the specifics, the details. I don't know if you have this more on, on whether or not it's appropriate to talk about what the SBC, the, the school building committee is gonna do prior or save that for the discussion of the article, but uh. Yeah, to answer your question, um, I made a lot of phone calls this week. So I talked to town moderator, he was like, hey, you're welcome to do a school community update, which I think we should generally, right? Uh, but before that, Kevin and I had a quick discussion, and maybe we have a, a session at the senior center and, and something else. I also talked to the town clerk and said, hey, how do we get a insert into the packet? Uh, so we have to, you know, um, by May tenth is, uh, so the goal is to actually have only a one pager in, in the packet by then. So, um, Matt and I are trying to meet with Dr. McIntyre and Ottland next week to kind of come up with some kind of plan to do this. Cuz that was also the feedback we got in that forum.
I.
Sorry, one second. I see you taking notes. It's already in the tracker deliverables, what the due date.
That's great.
For your one pager that you requested.
I appreciate that that will be shared, Matt. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'll be s- some type of, of, of like kinda frequently asked questions, right? You, I watched the video from Monday night and it's, well, are we gonna build new? Are we gonna renovate? Um, where are we gonna put it? How much is it gonna cost, right? And, and we know that we don't have those answers. We have to go through the feasibility process. So to try to avoid all those questions at town meeting for the, for the efficiency of the meeting, how do we get that message out to the community? And that's why I was asking something before, so it's, you know, I kind of equate the feasibility study to a home inspection, right? We just don't know, we don't know yet. It's a home inspection, right? We don't know what's going on in the house, and this is our house, right? So until we get that home inspection, that will tell the next steps. And I think a lot of people are hoping that we already know the next steps, but we don't until we get that feasibility study.
And I one hundred percent agree with that. If we can anticipate the questions from what we learned through woodland, obviously, and that's, nobody has asked, like, how many pieces of paper that Dr. Ottland and the sixty teachers that are volunteer that put together for the education plan. They wanna know what you just said.
Right.
Why, why can't we put a second floor on where it's gonna go?
Right.
And as long as we're clear and honest, and, and that is that the problem we're working to solve now, is how do we get that out in various forms and. That's to be determined, I believe.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, I mean, we, we, everybody has these questions, but we're talking about a, a town meeting warrant. So we, we need the town meeting members to be engaged in, in, in the answers or to be engaged in the questions of both.
Right.
Um, so I'm not sure what form we're gonna put together between now and town meeting and how we're gonna inform, I mean, and, and town meeting is representative. So we, we want the whole community to hear what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, they can reach out to the town meeting members, but, well, I, you know, the questions seem to be more about the end result, which is, is, as we hear is articulated, is we don't even have a feasibility study yet. We haven't even appropriated money for a feasibility study. We're trying to appropriate a school building committee based on, you know, uh, moving forward in this process. I think we just need to outline the process better for people so that, you know, we, we even have our own questions. I think we just need to outline the process better for people, so that, you know, we, we even have our own questions. We've been involved in this intimately for, for years now. Um, I, I just think we need to get that out there. Like, we don't have any answers where we're gonna almost explain our, our own questions, or all of the questions, you know? Something like that? I know I'm not articulating it well, but...
No, no, I thi- I think that, and I think that's exactly, and I'll steal the, the same phrase, I just said it, the, the problem that, that Michael's been focusing on, especially the last couple of days, we're talking about town moderator stuff, is, e- especially with these two articles, is how can we give the membership, um, of town meeting and the public the understanding that we, how can we bring them up to the same speed and get them to know that this is a process, and these are the first two pieces we have to get by, and then there's, you know, nine more hurdles over two-hundred-and-seventy days. So it is similar to that one or two-page outline presentation. How can we as clearly as possible outline how it's going? And I know we have discussed, um, as well, especially once we get the new website up, but potentially sooner, there's gonna be a dedicated, right on the front page link, that's, we're gonna be able to put on active, here's where we are in this, the process. Do you have something?
Yeah, um, in the Woodland process, I don't know how many people remember this, but we created a video that basically explained the why, why we needed it, and we had it looping in all the buildings. I think it was like twenty-four-seven, just looping a building, but we also pushed it out.
At one point I could say it word for word.
We pushed it out though, too, to the public. So I'm sure Jeremy, cause Jeremy, Jeremy, um, produced it. I remember writing the script for it, I don't know where it is, but, um, he probably has a copy of it, so that could be a good model to use.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
I just wanna make one more suggestion, Matt, just for consideration. Maybe in conjunction with sending something to town meeting, we offer a one-hour virtual office hour right before town meeting. So if anyone wants to come with questions to potentially cut some time off the floor at town meeting night, we would be available, a couple of us could be on the call, just hang on for an hour and just answer questions.
Um, that's a fantastic idea, I'll know that one down. And I think, obviously, continued forums, we talked about, we need to have these forums in different places. This is a good spot, it's not easy for everybody to get to. Different forum opportunities, I know that there's the, the multilingual, um, parent advisory, advisory council, maybe there's, maybe we're stopping into these pieces too, to do a small presentation online.
I think this is specific for town meeting, Matt?
Yes, oh no, certainly.
Yep, agreed.
That's a great idea, and I think that that's something we can balance, uh, continue to go after, after you've done.
So I, I completely agree with Megan, I think that's a fantastic idea. Um, to Craig's point, I think Craig's point may have been a little later in the process, when we got closer to appropriating the money for Woodland, as opposed to appointing a school building committee. Um, and I, I think we probably need a very clear, um, presentation at town meeting, something more than just reading the, the, the warrant article and asking for a vote. We may need three or four or five minutes of explanation of how we got to this point, and, you know, what the next steps are, which are, you know, years going forward, not, it's not happening tomorrow, i- if it happens at all. So I think, you know, a, a five-minute presentation is probably warranted there, because they're there, then, that's the audience. We know that the town meeting, um, whatever the, the, if it was a committee, you're like, the pre-town meeting, what was it all, Chris, do you know?
The town meeting.
Improvement committee, wasn't the improvement?
Yeah, I think it was.
The town meeting, whatever. They, they had these pre-town meeting meetings, I'm not gonna judge if Mike not remember his name, but it didn't have much participation. So I think we really need to gear this towards that evening, because I don't think we're gonna get enough attention from town meeting members, um, by setting up pre, uh, we want to do that for the public and everybody else, but I, I think we need to have a, 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 a well-presented, um, article, and maybe a little video display, or, or maybe Craig can do his famous PowerPoint. Something like that, but I think this needs to be geared towards town meeting.
For town meeting, we're gonna do a, an insert in the packet, and then we're gonna do a, uh, presentation at town meeting before the articles. So I talked to the moderator today about that.
Perfect, good idea.
And the, um, the, the content of that, um, I know Michael's working on a couple of things, and then we tried for Monday, but, uh, we're gonna meet as well with Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Ottland, and if you're around too as well, just to kind of determine what data we want, and that, that supports the story you just talked about, where we are, how we got here, what the SLI was like, and the steps that we need. And, um, as we did for the presentation, kind of carry it up to the feasibility, so that we have the, the step to point to when they ask about what we do with the building, but, but these pieces specifically that are related to the article, so. Anything else? Good?
So that brings us to, hold on, am I on the right place? It brings us to the report of the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, all right, so I wanted to review, uh, our math and I-ready scores, um, at the request of, um, Ms. Hornberger. Um, we wanted, I wanted to show you the, the growth comparisons between the fall of twenty-three, so when the kids took it in September-ish, and they just took the, the winner, um, I-ready in around end of February, beginning of March. So we'll talk about that real quick. Um, we'll also talk about our current programming, which will be a review. We've been talking about some of the things that we've been doing in ELA and math. Um, I'll briefly touch upon how we use the scores, and then what we're planning for in the future. But also not stealing the thunder of all the schools that come in when they have their school improvement plans. So K-five math programming, um, again, just to refresh, we are on year two of our illustrative math implementation. Um, we've moved to sixty-minute core blocks, core instructional blocks, all the way through K-five. We have twenty to thirty-minute ST math and intervention blocks in addition to the sixty minutes. So all kids are, every day, getting eighty to ninety minutes of math, um, instruction, uh, let's say. Uh, and then this year, the focus of, of what teachers are working on in groups are, they're, they're looking at the unit assessments to identify the, the standards prior to the unit being taught. So they know which standards that they should be focusing on during instruction. Uh, in six-eight, we're in our year one of illustrative math. Carrie Taylor and, um, a few consultants are working with teams of teachers to understand the unit objective. So before they actually implement the units, they go through the units, um, with either Carrie or, uh, we have a couple of consultants. Um, and they just talk through what it is that they're supposed to be looking for. Um, this is also year one of our Math Connections course in the, the middle school. Just to remind, remind everybody, our, that's a special subject that we created. Um, so all students are enrolled in one trimester of an additional math course. So over the course of the three years, this, the idea is that students will be getting four years of math. In that, that course, they're working on financial literacy, they're working on project-based instruction, then also some interventions. Uh, then this year, we also have our Math Connection teachers, um, co-teaching partial inclusion classes with special educators, where before it was special educators, um, without necessarily the content specialty, teaching the students math, so that's a change as well. All right, the K-five literacy, um, we've moved to a hundred-and-twenty minutes of core literacy instruction. Um, we're continuing with foundations as the phonics program at K-two. All teachers are working together in keys to literacy, professional development. If you recall, we purchased the Flyleaf decodables, and they're distributed through all the, the classrooms right now. We have teachers piloting core literacy programs, which are Amplify and EL. Um, reading intervention teachers available to support the tier-one instruction, that's all the way K-five. Um, and then we have the grant-funded Ignite one-to-one tutoring, uh, that's for eligible grade-one students. Um, I don't remember the, the exact number, but somewhere around two-hundred-and-seventy grade-one students. Uh, I think that's how many seats we have, two-eighty, something like that. Um, all right. For grade-eight literacy, grade-six, uh, all students have reading in ELA, so ninety-four minutes of literacy instruction. In grade-seven and eight, all students have ELA. But then some students, the students that are reading at or above grade level are in world language. Uh, students reading below grade level are in reading. So if they have the reading course, then they have the ninety-four minutes in seventh grade and/or eighth grade. In grade, uh, six to eight, reading in ELA teachers have also been working on the science of reading uh, for secondary students throughout the year. Uh, we're piloting literacy, actually piloting, and they came to consensus on a reading program for next year, just this week. So, um, they will be implementing Amplify next week, uh, at the six-eight level. So all the teachers came together, uh, and they came to consensus. It was, um, it was actually a good meeting. And then, uh, moving for, uh, yeah, that's it, moving forward, we're using Amplify next year. All right, so let me explain what the, what we're looking at for numbers. So these are our, our median growth scores. So halfway through the year, you'd expect the median to be roughly around fifty percent. So this is our, I don't remember how I broke it out now, but this is Brookside math, for example. So this number, this number here, sixty-two percent, which means that, um, this is what the students have progressed towards their typical growth. So remember that, it's towards typical growth. Students start at different places, doesn't mean that everybody's gonna be on grade level. It means that a kid took the test in the fall, um, the program sets, um, parameters around what the typical growth is. This is showing that between the spring, I mean, I'm sorry, between the fall and the winter, kids have made sixty-two percent, um, of progress towards that typical growth, which is good, which is what we wanna see.
Something you wanna stand by.
What's that?
Oh.
All set.
Thanks, Greg.
We had four minutes, I was hoping you could wrap it up in four minutes.
You shouldn't have said any of that, couldn't you?
Yeah, fair.
I probably can. All right. So down on the bottom, these two, and I won't go over all these. So these two, um, this is just the distribution of, uh, percentage of kids, right? So this first bar, for example, shows that twenty-two percent of the students at Brookside have already met their, um, their typical growth goal. Then it just goes down, uh, the next, this lo- this bar is eighty to ninety, this one's sixty to seventy-nine, forty to fifty-nine, and so on and so forth. This stretch goal, um, so when kids are already at, uh, are already below where they need to be, either one grade level, two grade levels, whatever, we need them to hit their stretch goals, okay? So the program sets their typical growth, but then it also sets a stretch goal. So if kids are, you know, two or more grade levels below, we need to hit, we need them to hit their stretch goal a number of years in a row before they're actually caught up, okay? So that's what this is telling us over here.
Craig, sorry, just to clarify, if your student was on, if a student is on grade level, they wouldn't have a stretch goal.
They would have a stretch goal still.
Okay.
It's, it's, they set a stretch goal for everybody.
Okay, I was curious, thanks.
So, and, and I think those, that's where we want kids to reach, right?
Sure.
This is your typical growth, but we want you to get to your stretch goal. Um, and so sharing that with kids is, I think it's a good idea. Um, some teachers do, some, some don't. But, um, every, every parent, when you get the report, I think you get the, where the goal is.
It's like the bar.
The typical goal and the stretch goal. Um, and that, again, that's something we've, we've done this year, that we haven't done in the past, is send all the, the parent reports home after both so far, and we'll do it again in the third. All right, so that's, that's what all of these different graphs mean. Makes sense to everybody? All right. So Memorial, sixty-two percent, uh, typical growth. Woodland's at sixty-seven, and this is all math right now. Stacy's at forty-three, which, um, in talking through that with, um, Carrie, um, obviously we want them to be at fifty, but she's, she's, um, sort of expects this with the new math program that we're implementing, all right? And she, I think she's talked about that before at the, when she came, about the, um, implementation dip. Uh, so she sort of expected that it would be around there. Uh, and so now we're back on the reading. Reading at Brookside, sixty-four percent. Memorial, sixty-two percent. Woodland's at ninety-five percent. And Stacy's seventy-four percent. So we're seeing good growth. Um, well, we saw good growth between the fall and the, the winter, and don't expect it to change all that much, um, in the spring. All right, so how we use the scores, it's part of a comprehensive look on, on achievement and growth. We would never just look at this and say, oh yeah, the kid is on grade level, not on grade level. We would use this as, um, sort of a dipstick, right? So this is, this is telling us the story of how the kid did on this one day. Um, but then the teacher's working with the student all, um, throughout the course of the year. Uh, and then we also use that data too. So our, our day-to-day, um, assessments and, and instruction. We also use it for interventions, uh, grouping students in skill-based groups. So this program also for teachers, after we do the, the test, the, um, the program will break the students into different groups by skills. So, you know, you might have six kids in the, in your class that need phonemic awareness, and it'll break, it'll break the groups down for them, and then it'll also tell them, these are the different things that you should do for these students. And then it also helps us to align curriculum instructional practices. Uh, some of the things that we're working on, uh, we're developing performance assessments, uh, to help complement I-ready. We're adopting literacy curriculum, like I said before, we've done that already at, um, at Stacy for next year. Um, we will be looking at that all year, um, well, mostly in the fall. I think we have to come to some sort of consensus through the fall, um, just for budget, for us. We're continuing to work on our Math Connections course. Continued work in teams on mathematical practices and, uh, IM curriculum development. Uh, in six-eight, we're norming around, we'll be doing the work that we're doing in the, um, K-five right now, which is our work around the assessments. Uh, next year, as part of our strategic plan, we're gonna be developing an instructional vision for our, our district. Um, putting finishing touches on our MTSS process and procedures. Uh, that'll be ready to go for the fall next year. Um, we're working with open architects to create an MTSS dashboard, uh, which will be very helpful for all of our teachers. And then ex- the exploration of interventions at Stacy, uh, which currently we just don't have, we have limited ability just to do that. One thing I do wanna say is, we've had to make some, make some shifts for next year at, at Stacy in terms of, um, our world language and reading numbers. Um, the world language, we have to have an additional reading teacher, uh, which, w- we're gonna, um, move a teacher from Stacy, a world language teacher, to a position, um, another position that's open, so that we can use that, use the other position to create a reading space, if that makes sense. And by doing that, it's gonna change the way that world language looks at, um, at Stacy a little bit. So in seventh grade now, the kids that are reading at or below grade level, they're gonna receive a half a year of French and a half a year of Spanish. And then after they have their half a year of French and half a year of Spanish, they're gonna make a decision going into eighth grade whether they want Spanish or whether they want French. Um, before, we gave them a full year of French or a full year of Spanish starting in seventh grade, uh, and then they had it in eighth grade too. They end up in, in French two or Spanish two. They still will have the ability to end up in French two or Spanish two at the high school by doing it this way. Um, but it allows them to make more of an informed decision from that half a year in, in seventh grade. The other thing it helps us to do is, it allows students that halfway through the year meet their benchmarks for reading, can now go into a world language for the other half of the year, instead of just staying in reading, um, when they don't necessarily need it, need that support anymore. Um, it also will allow us to do that in the eighth grade too. So students that have reading all year, now they're not missing a lot when they get right into, um, Spanish or French in grade eight. Uh, so that's one other thing that we're doing, um, next year. I don't know, does anybody have any questions? I tried to go quick, John.
I just had one quick question, so I know, and I know we've talked about this before, how grade six to eight, we have kind of a co-
how grade six to eight, we have kind of a co-teaching situation with the partial inclusion, with math teachers pushing in. Do we do that at the high school as well?
Yes, we do that at the high school. We do that with, um, with special ed teachers and EL teachers.
I just want to say thank you, because I think I made this request last week, so I really appreciate that you were able to pull it together, Craig, so quickly. I just want to confirm that we will communicate that foreign language change to parents. Um, I'm also curious, what's the, like, very high-level feedback on Math Connection so far? I mean, it sounds like an amazing program, what's the feedback?
I think that's a, I honestly haven't heard anything, honestly. My daughter's gone through it, she, she liked the course. But, I, I know that they're working with, um, PBL Works, which is like the gold standard of, um, project-based instruction. I also know that they're, um, they're working on the financial literacy part, so I think this year, this year, they've kind of dipped their toes in a different, a couple of different areas. I think next year, um, I think they're gonna have a much better streamlined approach to it, where they, I think they're still trying to build, alright, what's it look like in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade? But, they're also, what they're also trying to do, though, is align it to what they're learning in IM, which it isn't easy to do when you have the first trimester kids and the second trimester kids and the third trimester kids.
That's great, thank you. And also, as a parent, Craig, I appreciate having access to this data, just as another opportunity to kind of ascertain how kids are doing. Are we still leveraging, like, I think it's I-ready path at all?
Yes, so, um, that's mainly at the K-two.
Okay.
And that's a reason why kids need to take, uh, the assessment. So, the, how they get into my path is, um, by taking this assessment, and then it puts them on their path.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Alright, all set.
Well, I did have one other thing, sorry.
He directed at me, I was just joking.
One other thing that I think is exciting, um, we, uh, the One Eight Foundation has opened up, um, Ignite for next year, and we've applied for that. It's only open to districts that won the grant this year, so I'm, I'm hoping that we have a good chance to get that grant again, which would mean that we would have up to as many seats as, as we had this year, but only up to as many seats as we need in grade one. So, what they would also do, though, is, this was the, this was the stipulation of the grant this year. The kids that don't meet their benchmark in second grade, in first grade this year, will continue in second grade. So, I think this is, it's a great opportunity to give these kids a boost that they need.
That's very good.
So, fingers crossed, hopefully we get that one.
Excellent, cool. Right, you are, um, Assistant Superintendent for Business and HR, too? The next one's, the next one's for you, too?
Hold on, let me click out of this. Alright. Alright, so, we have today four warrants in the amount of six-hundred fifty-nine thousand, three-hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion to approve? Motion by Megan, second by Robin. Any questions or discussion? See none, all in favor?
That's due for Craig.
Unanimous? Yes.
Alright, you also, uh, in your packet, you have a budget update and a personnel update. And at your table, I had a, we had a, um, a late addition. We have a field trip request for grade three at Woodland. They will be going to the Roger Williams Planetarium in Providence, Rhode Island. The reason why it's in front of you is because it's an out-of-state field trip request. They are, it looks to me that they are taking all third graders on different days. It was relayed to me that the, the PTO is funding this, so the students aren't paying anything. They are leaving Woodland around quarter of nine and will be back around one-thirty. Uh, so this does require a vote.
I get a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for the grade-three field trip to Roger Williams Planetarium in Providence.
So moved.
Motion by Michael?
Second.
Second by Chris, any questions?
I just have, so just kind of in general, I don't know if this would be more of a future agenda topic, but just, I just kind of want to understand more the process of how field trips are working in general. So I don't know if this would go under, I know we have fundraising as a future agenda item, um, just-
We have a field trip policy also.
Okay, so maybe looking at the field trip policy, just like which grades are getting field trips? And I know you mentioned all the third graders are, so that's great, but then, our other, is it just up to kind of PTO discretion? Who's going on field trips? So, I guess, I just, while we're talking about this, wanted to bring up the topic of generally looking at how field trips are being determined.
Alright, I, uh, will add that to the list for the Policy Subcommittee for you to do.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Any other discussions, questions? No? All in favor? Is unanimous.
Alright, there, there is not a gift tonight.
Okay.
But, I believe there is, there are grants.
Yes.
There's a, there's a Title III immigration grant, uh, for, in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars. I don't know if you want to take them separately. Do, is it, require a vote, does it require?
We have to vote, but I don't think they have to be separately.
Okay.
You can do them together.
Alright, there's only two, so we can-
Unless there's any kind of serious discussion.
Alright.
Okay, and the second one is a Perkins four-twenty-two continuation grant in the amount of eight thousand, ten dollars.
And these are both state and federal grants, for the record, they're not competitive ones.
Got it, so before I ask for a motion, is there any discussion of either one of those? No? Alright, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion then to accept both grants, the Title III Immigration for eighteen thousand, six hundred forty-four, and the Perkins four-twenty-two continuation for eight thousand and ten dollars. Motion by Brendan. Second. Second by Chris. All in favor? Is unanimous? Thank you very much. Subcommittee updates, did any subcommittees meet last week?
Uh, Labor and Management met on Tuesday. Tuesday, uh, nothing really too serious, uh, just kind of the, the normal, some, some bugs, some rodents, things of that. You know, um, unfortunately, you know, I mean, well, just, I think it's also that time of year where things are, uh, you know, the, the, are, are happening, right, in and around the schools where the, the pest population is increasing a little bit. So, but, again, they're, feel the, uh, the facility staff is on top of it, so they're, they're, uh, their concerns are being heard, and, um, they're making sure that their, their things are being taken care of. Other than that, I don't recall anything, any major, uh, issues at all, I think there's one of the-
There was a question about the boiler project at Stacy, which is random traffic.
Yep.
Excellent. Nothing else? Alright. Future agenda items. I have School Building Committee for next week.
The only item, Matt, that I did not see on your very thorough future agenda item spreadsheet, um, was just follow-up from the audit. So Kathy was gonna come back with a timetable, as well as a gap analysis of procedures, and I'm just sensitive with our timing to have that be something we do sooner rather than later. And if it's on there, I apologize, I just didn't see it.
So that, yeah, it's, it's both.
Okay.
It's, it's, I'm sorry, it's not on the future agenda, it's on the task, um, and I did have that for today, but when she informed me that she wouldn't be here, I didn't push on it.
Great, no worries, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was gonna come soon, thank you.
What was the second part of that? You asked for a timetable?
So we talked about, so we, we said we would commit to sort of timetable for action items, deliverables from the audit items itself, and then the second piece was sort of a gap analysis for procedures that we, things we currently have documented versus what we dealt. We talked, I think, a little bit about some things, maybe with just more, um, inherent knowledge versus what's on paper. I think it would just be good to assess that in the next month or so.
Okay.
Thanks.
You call that gap analysis?
It was actually in the mini, mini, meeting minutes, not from last time, so you can probably just steal it from there if you want to borrow the language.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else?
This is maybe just a question, do we have Lucy scheduled for a meeting coming up for Special Education? And the reason I ask is just, one, to talk about what we've talked about before with the in-town transportation costs, but two, knowing that the state's rolling out a new IEP, I just thought it would be helpful for us to have that talked about here before it is put in place this fall.
Okay, I can, um, I can quickly comment on the transportation piece. I know that Dr. McIntyre has already put together the task force we talked about last meeting for transportation, and those folks are involved in that, um, and I'm sure there'll be an update coming to the committee at some point.
Yeah, probably not, I'll be in the next couple of meetings, but, you know, by sometime in June, I would think.
On that other aspect, though, we could, um, I'll, I'll find out when, shoot, be slated. I know we haven't, we haven't had a meeting yet this year with her, I don't believe.
Yeah, we can, we can get around that. The only challenge is gonna be we're starting to school improvement plan season.
I'll keep everybody really fast. Alright, anything else? Because I'm not even looking. Nope. Alright, just note that down. Alright, um, I guess that brings us to adjournment. We do not have, uh, an executive session tonight, so this will end our open session. I need a motion to end the meeting. Motion to adjourn? Motion by Chris, second by John.
He's looking over on the side of the room, John.
All in favor?
He's ignoring us.
It's unanimous.
I thought Michael's fine.
Thank you very much.
You did, actually.
That's why. Maggie, you wanna look at that now?